Well, good evening. Here we are on our Facebook Live study. I hope you have had a good day. We've got one person on so far. We've got some more coming on here real soon. I have spent most of my day working on income taxes, and that's not a fun thing to do, especially when you wind up owing more taxes than you thought you did. But I'm about to get to the end of it. If I keep this up, I'm going to be a TurboTax expert, I think. It's a handy tool, but boy, it gives you bad news sometimes as you figure those. We've got some things coming up here at the church that we need to announce. One, on April 9th, we've got an Easter egg hunt coming up. Susan Perkins and a group of ladies are working hard to get that ready. They met at the church yesterday, and people have brought in eggs and candy, and they put all those together and wound up with 5,000 plastic eggs filled with candy. That is awesome. That Easter egg hunt is on April 9th, a Saturday morning at 11 o'clock. Then on Palm Sunday, the next day, we begin our Holy Week services, and that'll run through. Of course, we'll have Holy Thursday with communion. Then we'll have Good Friday, which is a beautiful musical worship service. And then Easter Sunday morning, we start with a sunrise service. I'll be preaching the message for that. It'll be a brief service, probably about 30 minutes, 30, 35 minutes. And then we'll have our 9:30 worship service, and 2:11, 15 is our regular schedule. Hope you can be at that sunrise service and one of the others. And then Fun Day Sunday is April 24th, the Sunday after that. We've got our trailers lined up and sound system lined up. Everything's coming together for that. And Becky just posted a note. She's here with us tonight. Becky, you want to greet everybody? There we go. She was in a trustees meeting with the district last week and wasn't able to be with us, so it's good to have her here. She's going to do some reading for us. I wanted to make this the last announcement so I'd have more people on. Be thinking about what you would like to do in the way of a study. And maybe your way of a study is to say, "I'm done. Let's finish this one up and quit." But if you would like to continue, we'll finish up this study with the last part of chapter 19, the very beginning of 20, so there'll be another session or two. They'll take us into Holy Week. And then we won't have a Bible study on Thursday of Holy Week. That's whatever that is. Let me look at my calendar here. Holy Thursday, that is the 14th. So we'll have one on the 7th, but not on the 14th. And then we'll probably skip the next week, which is the 21st. And then we could start another study if you want to. So be thinking about what you'd like to see in a study. I particularly like to do New Testament studies. We have not done Matthew. We have not done Philippians or James. There's a lot of good... Haven't done Thessalonians or Colossians. So there's a lot of Paul's letters that are left to be done. But we have done a ton of books. We've done Mark, and now we're in Luke. We've done John. We've done the Revelation. We've done Ephesians, 1 Corinthians. We've done a lot of good studies, but online. But I'm certainly open to doing another one after Easter if you would like to see that. Post online, and if I don't see it, maybe Becky will, or email or text me later to tell me. Okay, enough of the commercials. Let's get into our lesson. A quick review of last week. I like to kind of review the last week because it helps to set the stage for the week that we're in. And also, some people may have missed one. Last week, we did chapters 13 and 14. We saw Jesus's confrontation with the religious leaders, the Jewish leaders, continue and perhaps intensify some. Jesus healed a woman who was bent and crippled. Today, we might say she had arthritis or osteoporosis. We don't know what she was ailing with, but she was very uncomfortable physically. She was in a synagogue on the Sabbath, and Jesus healed her. And I should have have pointed out at that time that in the Gospel of Luke, this is the last time Jesus will be described as being in a synagogue. He's on his way to Jerusalem. That's been our whole study, is this journey to Jerusalem as he goes to the cross. But as he travels down from Galilee toward Judea and into Jerusalem, here he was worshiping on a Sabbath in the synagogue. The opposition to him becomes so great that he'll no longer be welcomed into the synagogue. There was a question that Jesus asked about, "How do you think the people who were sacrificed along with their... were killed along with their sacrifices? You think they were any more sinful than anyone else?" And he says, "A tower fell on some people. Do you think that happened because they were sinful?" And then he says, "No, of course not." And I made the point that so often when something bad happens to us, we say, "What did I do to deserve this? Is God punishing me?" And the answer Jesus gives us here is, "No. Bad things happen to us in life." And someone who wasn't on the study live last week, but who watched it later this week, texted me or emailed me and asked, "Hey, I saw your study, and I saw that note, and I totally agree that God doesn't..." When we get sick, it's not because we're being punished. But this person said, "It seems like in the Old Testament, there are a number of times where people were punished with bad things happening to them." And she's exactly right. In the Old Testament, people's righteousness, their being right before God, was totally dependent upon them being obedient, obeying the law. And when Jesus came, things changed. We went from the old covenant of the law to the new covenant, which is established on forgiveness through Christ. And that's done through faith by grace. And so things did change. But I also pointed out to her that God is the same God. And even in the Old Testament, yes, where we hear of the Israelites being punished by being sent on exile and other things like that happening, we have the Book of Job, which the whole point of the Book of Job in the Old Testament is to teach us that bad things can happen to good people. Job was a righteous person, a good man. And when bad things happened to him, even his best friends tried to convince him that he had sinned. So God's trying to teach us with that book that, no, it doesn't always happen that way. There can be consequences for sin, obviously. But when bad things happen, it oftentimes is an opportunity for Christ to be with us, not that Christ or God caused it. Let me ask you what Jesus meant by this. In 15:34 last week, he said, "O Jerusalem, Jerusalem! How often I have longed to gather your children together as a hen gathers her chicks under her wings, but you were not willing." Why did Jesus say that? He's not quite into sight of Jerusalem, but he knows he's coming there. He knows that opposition awaits him. And so here he says this. There's another... He says something very close to this in another Gospel. "I would have gathered you under my wings like a hen gathers her chickens if you would allow me to, but you did not." What's his point there? We might ask, well, what's the word picture that he's painting? In a parable or an analogy? This is really more of an analogy than a parable. But in an analogy, there's always the physical thing. You get the meaning of that, and then you say, "So how does that apply to this situation?" The physical thing that's happening is when a hen senses that her chickens are being threatened. Let's just say a cat, or a dog, or a fox, or something that could injure those chicks come close. The mother hen will call out to the chicks. She'll raise her wings up, standing on the ground, and the chicks will come to her, and she drops those wings down and covers them up. She'll protect them. In fact, a hen will die before she'll abandon her chicken. Okay, and Lynn goes to now the meaning of that. Like that mother hen wanting to protect her chickens, Jesus has been telling them what they needed for salvation, but they wouldn't listen. And he's saying, "That salvation, this good news that I bring about the kingdom would save you, and yet you're not willing to accept that." That's what he means by that. "I would love to protected you with this good news." He said, as he says this. Jesus had said in last week's scripture, "We have to love Him more than family." He says it in a strange way, since this is written in Greek, by saying, "You have to hate Mother, Father, members of the family." And you're right, Christie. That's exactly right. He went long past that and says, "The crowds were following Him, but should stop and count the cost." In other words, it's not easy to be a follower of Christ. And he says, "You need to know what's about to happen." He even says, "If you're going to follow Me, you must be ready to take up something." What do you have to take up? Perhaps to the cripple sitting by the pool, it was, "Take up your mat and go follow Me." To Matthew, "Take up what you have at the taxpayer's table and follow Me." Maybe your ledgers and your collections. But that's not what he says all of us have to do. All of us, he says, have to be ready, yes, thank you, Tom, to take up our cross. Our cross is the thing we die on. Our cross doesn't mean, well, I have a physical ailment, and so that's my cross. That's not what that means. Sometimes we apply it to that, but it really means something that we... A ministry that we take on, or a lifestyle that we take on, that may be dangerous, but it serves Christ. That's our cross. Becky just can't wait to read, can you, Becky?
Exactly.
Chapter 15, this is verses 1 through 7.
Now the tax collectors and sinners were all gathering around to hear him; but the Pharisees and the teachers of the law muttered, "This man welcomes sinners and eats with them." Then Jesus told them this parable. "Suppose one of you has a hundred sheep and loses one. Does he not leave the ninety-nine in the open country and go after the lost sheep until he finds it? And when he finds it, he joyfully puts it on his shoulders and goes home. Then he calls his friends and neighbors together and says, 'Rejoice with me; I have found my lost sheep. I tell you that in the same way there will be more rejoicing in heaven over one sinner who repents than over ninety-nine righteous persons who do not need to repent.'"
We need to spend some time on that because we hear that passage. We know the story well, and it's telling us some really key things. By the way, what you just read is the first parable of a series of three parables about the lost. So this has got to be a really, really important point to Jesus because he's gonna... It's kind of like, let me tell you this key theological point, but I'm gonna do it. Christie says, "This is her favorite." Yeah, this is a good one. And he says, "I'm gonna illustrate this point by telling you three stories." And they all have a common theme. It's about the lost being found. So you notice that he tells this after hearing the religious leaders muttering to themselves about how he keeps company with sinners? They've noticed that he hangs around with people who aren't religious. They're sinners. He hangs out with those who are lost. One of my favorite authors, as far as writing Christian books, is a lady named Kay Kotan, K-O-T-A-N. She's a leader in the Missouri Conference. And she came to our district and conducted a workshop on reaching out and finding people who are not in the church, people who are not Christian, bringing them into the church, helping them to find Christ. And she said, "The number-one reason that people in church..." And she was talking about Methodist, but Christie, I bet this applies to Lutherans too. The number-one reason that Christians, Methodists give for not witnessing their faith, bringing someone else into the kingdom, is they don't know any people who aren't in church. We say, "All my friends are Christian." I could go to a lot of small groups at Christ Church and bring this topic up, and so many people would say, "Well, all my buddies, all my friends are Christian." And Kay Kotan's point is, then you need to find some new friends. And she talks about how to connect with people that we see, but that we oftentimes walk past or we don't form relationships with. That is so on point to this parable that Jesus tells. "The shepherd is not being neglectful of the ninety-nine. He leaves ninety-nine who are safe, they're sound in the sheepfold; but what is he consumed with?" In other words, "I've got ninety-nine sheep. I counted them, ninety-eight, ninety-nine. Oh, wait, one..." He locks the door. In fact, there are probably other shepherds there with those sheep, keeping them safe for the night. But what is he consumed with? His passion. The shepherd, what is his passion from this point until probably later in the evening? What is he totally focused on? He needs to save the one. Yes, this one didn't show up with the rest of the sheep. I'm guessing he counted again. He may have counted again. And then he goes, "One is missing." And then in his mind, think about this shepherd. "I've got to find this one. It could be hurt. It could be sick. It may have strayed and gotten caught in bushes. I've got to find that lost one." That becomes his passion. Sometimes in churches, congregations have to realize that pastors or different lay leaders are out in the community doing what they do to try to find the lost one. Sometimes congregations want the pastor to spend all her or his time doing ministerial work in the congregation. And there's a lot to be done, teaching, preaching, leading worship. But some of the committee meetings and some of those other things, they have to kind of be turned over to somebody else so some other people can be out reaching the lost one. And it's not just something that a pastor does. As a matter of fact, pastors are as guilty as anybody about not having any friends who are not Christians. Laypeople oftentimes are in places where there are those who are not yet Christian. And real quickly, I want to throw out a plug for something that's coming at Christ Church called Fresh Expressions. We are very much an inviting church. We invite people to come. And in all those who come, there are a number who come who are looking for a church. Some come who are looking for Christ. And they find Christ. And that's incredible. But there are some people who will just never come inside a church. They've been hurt by the church, or maybe they've heard bad things about it, so they won't come. And this thing called Fresh Expressions is a way for people to use their networks, their places where they hang out in order to start doing Bible studies and prayer meetings and things that will attract people and there reach them for Christ. You'll hear more about that. But I'm excited that we're doing that. The whole purpose of Fresh Expressions is to go find the lost one. We may have ninety-nine in the church. They're attending worship, and they're going to small group meetings, Sunday School classes, and all those types of things. But there's the one. And for us, statistics show that there's between 12,000 and 14,000 people within driving distance of Christ Church who are the one. They are lost. They do not know Christ. And so that's got to be some of our passion. Becky, I've yapped a lot about 1 through 7. How about 8 through 10? This is a different something that's lost.
Or suppose a woman has ten silver coins and loses one. Does she not light a lamp, sweep the house, and search carefully until she finds it? And when she finds it, she calls her friends and neighbors together and says, "Rejoice with me; I have found my lost coin." In the same way, I tell you, there is rejoicing in the presence of the angels of God over one sinner who repents."
Now again, when we hear an analogy, if it's in a teacher teaching, as Jesus is doing here, if it's in a sermon, we want to think first about, what's the analogy? What's the physical thing that's happening? Now, what's the application? The physical thing that's happening, this woman may have been really poor. She had ten coins. She loses one. She's lost a tenth of her wealth. But there's another thing in the Hebrew culture that may have been taking place. Women oftentimes were given a dowry, and sometimes their dowry was ten coins. They liked to take those coins, put a hole in them, put it on a silver string or necklace, and tie that around their forehead. You've probably seen images of women in the Middle East, even today, with bangle dangels on their forehead. Coins would serve that purpose. And if that was part of her dowry, this would be almost like losing a set out of an engagement or wedding band. This was precious to her, probably because of the monetary value, but also perhaps because of the sentimental reason. You can imagine how frantic she is in looking for that coin. When we lose something, that coin becomes so important. You don't throw away the other nine, but you get focused on finding the one, and you celebrate when you find it. She calls her friends in to celebrate whenever she finds it. Now, this next one is called the prodigal of the parable of the prodigal son. But we need to dig into this and see if we can glean a lot of meaning out of this. Becky, if you would, read 11 to like the first half of verse 20.
Jesus continued, "There was a man who had two sons. The younger one said to his father, 'Father, give me my share of the estate.' So he divided his property between them. Not long after that, the younger son got together all he had, set off for a distant country, and ere squandered his wealth in a wild living. After he had spent everything, there was a severe famine in that whole country, and he began to be in need. So he went and hired himself out to a citizen of that country, who sent him to his fields to feed pigs. He longed to fill his stomach with the pods that the pigs were eating, but no one gave him anything. When he came to a census, he said, 'How many of my father's hired men have food to spare? And here I am starving to death. I will send out and go back to my father and say to him, 'Father, I have sinned against heaven and against you. I am no longer worthy to be called your son. Make me like one of your hired men.' So he got up and went to his father. But while he was still a long way off, his father saw him and was filled with compassion for him."
Okay. Somebody tell me how much of the property this young man would receive? He's the youngest son, and in their culture, that had a significance. So here he demands his share. And the dad knew it wasn't the right thing to do, but decided to give it to this young man. Occasionally, in their culture, fathers would divvy up the property like this before the father died. But it was rare. And it would be extremely rare and really selfish, rude for a son or daughter to say, I guess in their system, sons inherited things. Actually, John, it's not an equal amount. The second son, or a younger son, would get one-third, and the older son would get two-thirds. And that's kind of important when we see how this thing turns out. Becky, I saw a prayer request there. If you would jot that down. Thank you. Yes, one-third. Most of it goes to the first. That was a practice called primogeniture, which means the first son gets the prime or the primary part of the property. It's like the older gets two shares, younger gets one. So the younger one gets a third of what the old man has. This may mean that the father had to sell off some of the property. In other words, he's got to liquidate his estate. Now he gives it to the younger son, and the younger son goes off and blows the money. He goes into a distant place, spends the money. And I'm going to jump ahead to the lessons that we learned from this parable. Whom does the Father represent in this parable? And by the way, Jesus is telling a story. And it would be a total mistake for us to say, "Well, what was the name of the son? What was the older son's name? What's the dad? Where did they live? Whether or not there were actually these three people alive..." Yes, Christie, thank you. The Father represents God. And a lot of Jesus's parables, they're not an allegory. Everybody doesn't stand for somebody. But in this one, the Father no doubt stands for God. This is important to realize at this point in the story as the Father allows a young man to have his inheritance and to go on his way, even though the Father knew this is not going to be a good thing. "He's not responsible enough to take a third of my possessions and be responsible with it, to make it work." And yet he gives it to him. Remember that thing that we teach so much? God gives us free will. We're not robots. God has a plan, but God gives us free will so we can choose to do things within God's will or against it. This young man does something that's totally outside his father's will. His life becomes detestable, especially for someone with his Jewish background. Why is that? If the people listening to Jesus would have been Jews, and Jesus... You know, this young man is Jewish. Jesus is telling it right in his own culture. Why is his situation so detestable? He's hungry. That's always bad. There's a famine. And because he's blown all his money, he can't buy food. But the food is scarce to start with, which means food would have been much more expensive buying bread. Okay, he is working with pigs. He's feeding pigs. In their culture, pigs were unclean. You couldn't eat them. So if you touched them, if you did anything to do, yes, tending swine, you too became unclean. So spiritually, he knows that he is unclean, and he's wishing that he could eat the pods that he's feeding to the swine. Pigs eat some pretty gross things. And so his situation has become pretty bad. He realizes he's burned some bridges. He can't turn around and go home and say, "Well, Dad, how about if you could feed me and clothe me and treat me well?" Most of us have been away from home and came to the realization that, you know, I didn't have it too bad. Maybe my mother or my father, maybe they're a little smarter than I thought they were. Maybe we weren't a prodigal son or daughter, but this young man has hit dirt bottom, and he makes up a little speech. He's going to go home, and he's going to say to his dad, "Would you just treat me like one of your hired hands, like a servant? I don't expect anything other than just to have food and clothing to get by." When he arrives home, what does the young man find? Now, think about this. He's walking back home. He's practicing his speech. "Hey, Dad, would you let me come back home and just treat me as a servant? I've sinned, and I'm so sorry." What does he find? Whenever he... You know, I picture this image of there's a horizon, and he comes along on the horizon. And then he gets closer and closer, and here he finds something. What does he find when he gets home? Oh, yes, his father runs to him. His father sees him from a long way away. John Wesley called this prevenient grace. He sees the young man before the young man sees his father. God is always reaching out to us. Prevenient grace, yes. He's showing love. This father... Uh, this father, uh, he finds forgiveness and unconditional love, absolutely. The father just overwhelms the son by, by saying, here, here, somebody bring the best robe. That reinstates his honor. He has clothes now. He gives him a signet ring, welcoming father. Exactly right, the father's waiting to welcome him. The signet ring would have had the family emblem on that. You use that, you press it into hot wax. That's like having a, it's more than a signature. It's almost like a signature in a notary public signing something. He's just made the young man, he's given him authority as a member of the family, not a servant. He gives him sandals for his feet. That's so important. We say, okay, so he was, he was, he was barefoot. Now he's got sandals, but that symbolizes something. Hired people went barefooted, servants went barefoot. But this young man's got sandals and then he prepares this huge celebration. So what do we learn from that? Okay, nice story. Maybe we, if, uh, sometimes in worship Nathan likes to show videos. We see a video clip, we saw one, uh, last Sunday of Harriet Tubman. And you see the video and you say, okay, I see what she was doing. Now we've heard the parable, we see the father, we saw the son. So now what's the truth? What's the, what's, what's Jesus trying to teach us by that parable? Remember who the father is, uh, of the prodigal son. And by the way, the prodigal son is, is most of us. At, at some time or another, we've all been prodigal in some way, astray. In, in this series of, of three, the son is the lost one, right? The son is lost and he's being found here as he comes home to, as Greg says, this welcoming father. So what do we learn? If we realize, as you all did right at the beginning, that this father is God, then yes, God welcomes back those who have been away. We are to do that. God is extending grace. The father didn't say, well, you've got to work for me for five years, take two classes and do this or do that, and then I'll forgive you. He forgave him right then. God will always accept us. Yes, Lynn, whenever we come back asking for forgiveness. The young man was asking for forgiveness. He had, he had repented and the loving father was there to welcome him back. When you become a pastor or a second career pastor like I did, the Methodist church has this awesome process for making that happen. And one of the things that they do, it's, it's kind of like you go through a process of discernment and then when you decide that, yes, I'm really being called into the ministry, you go away to several weekends of something called licensing school. And it's a little bit like drinking from a fire hose. You learn about how to do pastoral care, uh, how to make hospital visits, how to, how to do funerals and, and to, to help care for grieving families. Very important. We, we studied Christian education, we studied preaching, uh, different methods and styles of preaching, how to do your study in order to preach. We learned about finances in the church, about stewardship, administration. But I was really disappointed when I went through that and looked at the syllabus and, and, and saw the books that we were reading, it was nothing about evangelism. There was nothing about finding the lost one. That was so important to Jesus, it's so important to Jesus. And it is, it was so important to Wesley and the Methodist church. And I'm, I'm, when I, we got an opportunity to provide feedback, that was my feedback. It's like, hey, if we're going to reach people for Christ, pastors need to have a, a burning desire to reach out to the lost one. And the studies, the, the material that we went over, it was all good stuff, but it had a gaping hole in it. Fortunately, when we did our course of study in places like Canler, then we did have classes in evangelism and, and reaching those who don't know Christ. Not everyone in the prodigal son's family rejoiced. Who was not happy? Becky didn't read that, I had her stop short of that. But somebody was not happy. Who was it? Tell me a little bit about the, the surly one. Sometimes I can identify with the surly one, the one who was not happy. Oh yeah, the eldest son, the big brother. Yeah, he stayed home, you know, he didn't go blow the dad's money. In fact, he didn't ask for dad's money. He was, he, he didn't, he didn't ask for that. He stayed home, he did his work. And now that the, uh, younger son has come back, he is really torqued. He's upset that they've killed a fatted calf and having a party. In fact, he says the dad never did do that for him. He's resentful, yes, a good word to put, to use, and, and the way to put that. He is being really mean spirited. Uh, I can identify with it because it's, it's kind of like he's the rule follower, the other guy's the wow one. And yet they're having a party for the wow one. So often in the church, we sort of take on the attitude of the older son. Wait a minute, I don't know what that person's been like, they've done this, they've done that. And now we're making a big deal over the fact that they're in the church? It's being mean spirited and we should learn that from this story. I, I'll never forget the first time I heard this parable. It was in, uh, it was in Vacation Bible School. My teacher was Miss Mabel Gill. And she read the story and the whole thing all the way through. And she said, so who was the son who was, uh, who would, you would say was, uh, maybe the most lost? And I said, oh, the one that ran away and spent all his dad's money. And she goes, anybody else have an answer? And her grandson, David Bennett spoke up and said, grandma, I think it was the older son because he never forgave his brother. And she said, that's exactly right, very good. And I thought, wait a minute, he stayed home and was a good kid and, and obeyed his father. But the, he is the most lost. And he is the most lost because he is not able to forgive, to accept, to extend the kind of grace that you all described that the father had extended. We're Christian and we're supposed to do what God would have us do. If we, if we can do what God would do, certainly what Christ would do. Chapter sixteen, Luke sixteen, has two stories in it. One of a shrewd manager and one of the rich man and Lazarus. Becky, if you would, read the, we'll read the one of, uh, of the shrewd manager and we'll paraphrase the other one, Luke sixteen, one through nine.
Jesus told his disciples, there was a rich man whose manager was accused of wasting his possessions. So he called him in and asked him, what is this I hear about you? Give an account of your management, because you cannot be manager any longer. The manager said to himself, what shall I do now? My master is taking away my job. I'm not strong enough to dig and I'm ashamed to beg. I know what I'll do. Who, when, when I lose my job there, people will welcome me into their houses. So he called in each one of his master's debtors. He asked the first, how much do you owe my master? Eight hundred gallons of olive oil, he replied. Manager told him, take your bill, sit down quickly and make it four hundred. Then he asked the second, and how much do you owe? A thousand bushels of wheat, he replied. He told him, take your bill and make it eight hundred. The master commended, the dis, the master commended the dishonest manager because he had acted shrewdly. For the people of this world are more shrewd in dealing with their own kind than are the people of the life. I will tell you, use worldly wealth to gain friends for yourself so that when it is gone, you will be welcomed into eternal dwellings.
That's a, that's kind of a different kind of parable. Uh, Dr. William Barclay is one of the best New Testament commentators I've ever read. And Dr. Barclay calls this the parable of the scoundrels. He says, everybody in the parable is a scoundrel. The, the manager is a scoundrel because he's cheating the master. You know, he sits down and cuts the bill. Uh, that's like embezzlement, he's not getting the money, but he's letting others off. And that's a ton of money. You know, cutting it by two hundred bushels of grain, cutting it by five hundred gallons of olive oil. He's giving away a lot of his master's money. The people who let him reduce their bill, they're scoundrels, they know they owe more and yet they're being allowed to cheat. The, the master is a scoundrel because he commends the guy for being so shrewd. It's like, wow, I've been cheated, but that was smart. Now, the, the, the master may be benefiting a little bit more here because these people may not have been able to pay the full amount, but once the bill is cut, they pay off. So maybe he's getting paid more than he would otherwise, but everyone is being dishonest. Yes, Lynn, total dishonesty. Jesus is not commending dishonesty, he's not in any way. What he's saying is, conduct ourselves on earth so that we'll be in favor in heaven. It's like he's, it, it's almost like, uh, pull that point out of this. You know what it is with money, people cheat each other all the time. And he's saying, don't cheat each other, but behave on earth in ways that will have you be welcomed in heaven. And then he continues that point to say, you only have so much time on earth to be in a righteous situation. And then he tells the story of, of Lazarus and the, and the rich man. Lazarus was a poor beggar. He sat by the gate at the rich man's house. We've come along and we've given names to the, to the rich man and other things. This is an intriguing story. But this, this poor beggar had nothing to eat and the rich man would drive by every day and probably turn his head away from him, we can just imagine. He wanted nothing to do with him. It says, the dogs licked the sores on the poor beggar. He was in a terrible, terrible state. And yep, the rich man drives by and he's got everything he could want. They both die. The rich man, well, first Lazarus is seated by Abraham. And in, in their way of describing it, a Jewish person would hear that as, oh my goodness, he's with God, he's in God's company, because certainly Father Abraham is in God's company. We would say he's in heaven, right? What about the, what about the rich man? Anybody notice where he wound up? He can see Lazarus, he can see Abraham, but there's a great chasm, a great gap or valley between the two. He is in a place called Hades. And in Jewish, uh, faith, Hades was a shadowy, dark place where you went if you, uh, if, if you weren't, uh, if you weren't being rewarded, okay? When you died, you went to Hades, you were kind of in the shadowy, dark place of the dead. And so the rich man looks across and says, hey, send Lazarus over to, to just, uh, cool my lips. Oh man, I'm burning up here. By the way, Hades was also a place of punishment. We might call it hell, right? And you couldn't send him. And God wouldn't send him. And so Lazarus says, well, at least send Lazarus back to earth. If you can't come to me, send him back to earth to warn my brothers that they need to change their ways and be righteous. And the answer was, if they don't live that way now, then warning them will do no good. He had five brothers. There's a point in that, and that's this. We have to pay attentions, uh, pay attention to the Bible's call to believe and to live faithfully in this life. We can't depend on something afterwards. Rob Bell wrote a book a few years ago that was, it's really controversial. We did a study on it at Christ Church. The name of that book is God Wins. And Rob Bell's point in writing the book is he thinks everybody winds up in heaven. And, uh, this parable that Jesus is giving us is saying, no. We have an option, we can have faith, we can repent, accept Christ on this earth, but we, we aren't going to be able to do that from hell. They had already been told, Lynn says, and that's exactly right. I, I don't want to end on that thought of, well, we, I guess my point here is remember the first three parables. There are people out there who are lost. And we as Christians should have this burning desire to reach out and share the good news of Christ with them. Not to make them feel guilty, not to tell them they're going to wind up in hell. Sometimes people get just pushed away because of the way Christians are so judgmental. We should do that out of love. We should reach out to the lost one, like that very first parable with the lost sheep, uh, because we care about them and we go seeking them and we want to bring them back. So much of what we do in church is geared toward accepting people who aren't in the church. Reach out and to bring people back. So we're out of time, we're out of scripture. Next week, we will do chapters seventeen and eighteen as Jesus gets much, much closer to Jerusalem and that cross that awaits him. It's been so good to have you all, uh, on tonight. It's been good to have Becky reading again. And I'll look forward to, if not seeing you next week, at least seeing your names pop up on, uh, on my phone as we do our study. You all have a good night and, and be blessed.